Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight, June 12th, City Council meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic under which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Yep.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Mayor Paula?
Here. Okay. Conflict of interest declarations. Would anybody need to recuse themselves on any item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on the lighting and landscape district, which is item number five in Zone 1.
Okay.
And I have to recuse myself in that same item for anything concerned with the cottages.
Zone 3. And would you let the record show us because they live in those zones? And I also will be recusing myself for item 5, lighting and landscape district, Zone 3, since I also live in the cottages. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda review. Are there any changes and/or deletions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak should come down to the podium when advised and speak directly into the microphone. Please sign the book there for the clerk. And each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized. Each speaker is limited to speaking once under public comment. Okay? Shirley?
Good evening. Shirley Davis.
Okay.
Councilmembers, I want to talk about a very popular--
You could move that mic up, so you know. There you go.
I want to talk about a very popular subject that we have right now, which is called fire. And with that, I think we have a window of opportunity right now to say that we don't want to have fireworks in Cloverdale. And it may be a little bit too late right now because July 4th is just around the corner. But I would ask you to consider that for the future, for maybe next year. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, please sign the book if you didn't already, and your time don't start until you sign the book. There you go.
How are you?
Please state your name for the record.
Angela Cordova.
Thank you.
I would like to discuss the huge homeless problem that we have that is starting to affect a lot of people in the community. Fire hazard is my main concern, being that I live on the east side of Cloverdale on Asti Road. There's a huge, huge homeless encampment that is on the south parcels adjacent to my property that are vacant property, that the homeless have basically taken over. And I've sent out certified letters to about 14 agencies, as well as City Hall and Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kramer, Chief Kramer, excuse me. I understand that, you know, it's an abundance in the county, but our community is too small to carry that weight. And, you know, I know the rest of you up there have not seen these photos, which I will leave. You can pass them around. They're disturbing. They're pretty intense. The first one being a hypodermic needle that I personally recovered from our river that we take our kids to. I have my friend here who owns the vacant parcel. He's now forced to pay for the cleanup of the trash, the amount of litter. His parcel has a seasonal creek running into it, which has nothing but tires. There's been oil containers. You know, it's affecting our waters. I've notified the fishing game. I've notified the Army Corps of Engineers, all the necessary agencies. I understand that it's not just Cloverdale's City Council's problem. It's bigger than that. And if we can get those agencies to be held accountable and responsible and to help with this cleanup like they're doing in Santa Rosa, we need that help. We need to definitely get this resolved sooner than later. I don't know if Chief Kramer is aware of the man that was found on this vacant parcel in possession of a local community member, stolen generator that was brand new. There's abundance of thievery going on with local businesses that they've hit, huge dollar amounts. One business alone is $12,000, and that person was on the camera. So I need, you know, I would like you guys to put it on your agenda for the next meeting to discuss it so that it's not swept under the rug. It's not just overlooked. I understand, Chief Kramer, with all due respect, you guys can only do so much. I totally get that, and I understand. And that's why I brought in all those other agencies with the certified letter that I believe you probably received as well as you. And, you know, if they can come in and be a powerhouse to help get this problem taken care of, then we can, as a community, address it and take our community back. You know, last night I went out to the river, crossed over First Street Bridge to go to a friend's house. It looked like a search party was going on. They had nothing but flashlights and lanterns down the entire river on the north side of it, of the bridge. It's pretty scary. We can't even walk our trails anymore. And I highly recommend that you don't take your families or yourselves to the river after recovering needles from the river itself and the bed in front of it. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we do that, Councilmember Russell has a question or comment.
Well, yeah, I do. I just want to make sure that this is permitted. Normally, we can't really get involved in something not on the agenda.
Speak into your mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I was. Normally, we cannot get involved as a council with something not on the agenda. We have to put it on the agenda, as you pointed out.
Right.
But I did want to point out later in my report to the council on my own activities, I will be discussing the fact that this morning I was in a meeting here with a number of our community groups, as well as a representative from the regional, Sinoah County Regional Parks. And I brought up the subject of homelessness as a major issue for the parks. So I just, later on, if you can stay or if you can watch the video, perhaps there'll be more discussion of that. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
So before we move on to the next item, sign the book if you haven't. Two things. One is on the fireworks. Can we get that on the police subcommittee to start a discussion on that? And would you notify, not the police, I'm sorry, Fire District, Fire District Subcommittee, and we'll start that discussion? And also on the homeless, if we could get that on the police subcommittee, and so we can spend more time focused and figure out what, if anything, we can do on that. So, those two items. Thank you. Okay? If you could state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Ron Ziegler. Good afternoon, City Council. I'd like to echo what Angela just said with regards to the big problem of the homelessness is a threat to our community. I am a victim of what they have done. They moved into my parcel, hidden from view, down into the creek's bed, causing erosion, causing lots of trash, basically unhealthy situation. Yes, I am dealing with it. I am going to get them out of there. But my problem is now going to become someone else's problem because they're going to be moving on to somewhere else. And that might be your backyard, someone else's backyard, up the river, down the river. It's a problem. And this is something that I think we really need to seriously address. And by putting it on the agenda, I think it's great. I think it should be not only on the police agenda, but also the City Council's agenda. Because it's not a thing where the police are going to go there and arrest them. That's not going to solve the problem. They, the people that I, the homeless that I've been exposed to there, have phones. They network with each other. They know where they can go and what they can get away with. And if it is an easy place for them to reside or put their homeless camp up, they're going to do it. And they're going to get their other people along with them. So we need to address this in a humane way, but also in a reasonable way. And I feel that we're going to do our part, but I think you will have to do a lot more for all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And just so you're clear, the subcommittee does have two council members that sit on that, as well as city administration, as well as Police Department. And they certainly have the ability to invite several people from different agencies that can contribute to the conversation so they could look at the big problem and come up with hopefully some recommendations. Those recommendations will come back to the full council.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I'm chair of that, Ron, so if you want to email me, I can let you know when it's going to be on the agenda exactly, and we can talk a little more. I realize what a problem it is down there. I've walked down there a few times. But I'm not sure where your parcel is exactly.
Right. House and Hand Station. There's two parcels there.
Okay. Maybe after the meeting, you can just leave the information with the clerk and get it to the councilmember Brigham.
But if you want to start communicating with me, I'm happy to do it.
All right. So would anybody else like to speak to the City Council on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Do we have any council members requesting anything removed now? Does any member of the public want to make a request? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recommend we approve the consent calendar as submitted. I guess this is on.
Is the microphones on? These are not up loud enough? Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Walter made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Russell, second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no communications. Public hearing, lighting and landscape assessment district, public hearing for approval of the annual engineers' report, resolution authorizing assessments for fiscal year 2018-19. That would be our city engineer. That works.
So this is the, this is the third meeting for setting up the rates for the lighting and landscape districts. And so I think we're going to take it. Paul's going to make the introduction, then we'll take the resolutions as necessary for, to avoid conflicts of interest. So with no further ado, Paul, if you wouldn't mind doing the--
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name's Paul Wade. I'm with Coastland Civil Engineering. This item is part of the annual proceedings for the Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for fiscal year 2018-2019. Every year that the city wants to levy and collect assessments for the upcoming fiscal year, the city is required to undertake certain proceedings, which usually occur in three council meetings. And on February 13th, the first of those meetings for this year, the council initiated the proceedings by appointing the engineer of work to prepare the annual engineers' report. On May 22nd, the council adopted resolutions of intent to levy and collect assessments and set the date for the public hearing for tonight. And tonight, the council will conduct the public hearing and may then adopt resolutions authorizing the levying of assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. Copies of the preliminary, or the engineers' report for the fiscal year 2018-19 are attached to the staff report. Line item budgets for each zone are included in the report, and summaries of the fund balances follow those budget pages. In 2011, the City Council established a policy of trying to maintain a minimum fund balance reserve in each zone of 25% for Zones 3, 5, and 6. That's the cottages. Ioli Ranch and Brookside Terrace are all expected to end next fiscal year with reserves below 25%. Assessment increases are proposed for Zones 4, 5, and 6. That's the Vineyards, Ioli Ranch, and Brookside Terrace. Not proposed for the cottages at this time, but it's on the watch list and will probably end up proposing an increase in assessment for the following fiscal year. The increases in the assessments for Zone 4, the Vineyards, has a proposed increase of $23.40 per ESD or per house. Without that increase, its reserve would drop to about 20%. Ioli Ranch and Brookside Terrace are both being proposed to increase to the maximum allowed without balloting, and still will end up finishing next fiscal year less than 25%. Those two zones are going to continue to struggle. I anticipate we'll be proposing maximum that we can assess without balloting. And unless we can find a way to either reduce the costs or supplemental funding, that's going to continue to be a struggle for both those zones. Of course, all of that assumes that expenditures and revenues match budgets, and budgets are just budgets. So each of the zones has a built-in inflation adjustment to the maximum allowed assessment based on Consumer Price Index. This year, that adjustment is 2.9%. Those adjustments are shown at the bottom of each budget seat in the report. That's all I have tonight unless you have questions.
Any questions from council? Yes? Yes?
No, I just had a minor correction on one of the pages.
Which page?
It is page 24 of the item, but page 118. Page 118. There is a difference between, if you take it as Part C, it's the assessment role, and there is a difference, just a minor difference, between the number in the introductory paragraph and the total revenue. The introductory paragraph says $186,056.58, and, but the actual number is the one that appears at the bottom of the revenue. I added it up, and that's correct, at $188,456.92. So just with that minor correction.
I apologize for that. You are correct, and I'll get that corrected for the final report.
Thank you. You know, how I am about numbers that don't add up, I'd be crazy. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know if you want it now or after--
It's up to you. We're going to open the public hearing in a few minutes, but certainly if you have a comment.
Thank you. You know, Paul, at our last meeting, I questioned Zone 3 not having any increase this year. And you mentioned that next year, it looks like they're going to have to broaden an increase. I'm just concerned that next year will be a large increase, based on the fact we did nothing this year. And I'm not so sure whether that's fair to the residents in the cottages or not. But again, that's my opinion. I think they should have a little bump this year, seeing how they're going to, they're below their reserve where they should be. And next year, I think we're going to have some upset residents if they have to face a major increase.
Which landscape zone? I'm sorry.
The cottages.
Cottages. Zone 3, okay. Good, okay.
So, you know, I appreciate that input, and it really was a call on that, whether we went this year or not. The history of the ending fund balances versus our projections, what we start doing in March of this year versus the end of June of next year, tend to fluctuate a little bit. And the other thing I would point out is that at this point in the proceedings, we can't increase the assessments any more than we're in the resolutions of intent. Thank you.
All right. So why don't you have a seat? Maybe more questions? I'm going to do, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address the City Council on this item? It's to be the time to do so. Yes, please come up, and would you please sign the book? And you'll have three minutes.
Tonight, you're going to--
Please state your name for the record, please.
Dan Brettchelany.
Thank you.
Live at 123 Grape Gables in the cottages. Tonight, you're going to vote on several resolutions, and one or more are going to increase the assessments for Zones 4, 5, and 6. And I think we're all in agreement that those resolutions are going to increase those assessments. But that is in conflict with California Code 22626, part of the lighting and landscape district. Section B, it says, "If assessments are to be increased from any previous year, the legislative body you shall cause notice of the public hearing with respect to the increase to be given pursuant to section 53753 of the government code," which means you have to send ballots to all those homeowners in the zones where the increase is going to occur. If you read the lighting and landscape district, it doesn't say anything about these maximum assessment calculations that you see at the bottom of each budget page. It doesn't say anything about an inflation increase. Therefore, I would like to know why this section is not being adhered to. As far as I know, it's still part of the code. I don't know if it's been replaced. And I think, I think some effort should be expended into why you can increase assessments without a ballot to the voters, or, I mean, to the homeowners.
Great. Thank you. Did you want to address that at all?
Mayor, I'd recommend a response from our landscaping and lighting engineer, Paul Wade, to address that issue.
I can't cite the code section off the top of my head. I know there is provisions that allow for an inflation, built-in inflation increase. It might be in Prop. 128 in the California Constitution. But I'm convinced, and I can get back to you finding it, but just not off the top of my head.
Thank you.
The methodology that is outlined in the report is consistent with the practice that we've utilized to ensure that the overall assessments that are calculated annually stay below or at or below the CPI that's allowed. The things that the, our appointed engineer does is calculate the total maximum assessment that's been based on the CPI over time, and we've always stayed below that level. So it does allow for periodic increases without a balloting procedure. And that's the procedure that was followed and then set forth in the engineers' report.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the City Council on this? This is a public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Council. We have three resolutions. And the first one is Zone 1. I believe you're going to recuse yourself.
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so please note in the record that Councilmember Walter has recused himself and is leaving the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the resolution by title only.
Okay, thank you.
City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 031-2018, a resolution approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone 1 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Do we have--
I'll second.
Okay. So, motion was made by Vice Mayor Russell, seconded by Councilmember Brigham. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
With Councilmember Walter recused.
Chief, could you get Councilmember Walter, please? Okay, so if you could, note in the record that Councilmember Walter is back on the dais. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to a former mayor. Pass, immediate pass, Mayor Walter for that one. I'll be recusing myself for Zone 3, as well as Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Linda Pur, the mayor, if you'd please note in the records that he and Vice Mayor Russell have left the dais. Okay, the next item is Resolution Number 032-2018, lighting and landscape district for Zone 3. Would anyone like to make that, read that as title only?
Sure. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 032-2018, a resolution approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone 3 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Brigham, seconded by Bagby. Could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
With Vice Mayor Russell and Mayor Paula recused.
Recused. Thank you.
Okay, guys.
Okay, please note in the record, Vice Mayor Russell and myself have returned. So we have one additional resolution for Zones 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Somebody like to introduce that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that, I'll read that resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution 033-2018, a resolution approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts, and authorize the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Cloverdale Lighting and Landscape Assessment Districts for Zones 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 pursuant to the lighting and landscape, I'm sorry, pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Walter, seconded by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item Number 6 under New Business, consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution 034-2018, approving the budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Be our finance manager, Susie Holmes.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. If I can, I'm going to introduce this item on behalf of our finance manager, Susie Holmes, and then have her take over and kind of give you an overview. Just wanted to start by a little bit of, little bit of background and overview of what brought us here today in terms of the budget. You know, as a reminder, the budget is a comprehensive city budget. It not only includes what we all refer to as the general fund, but it also includes various enterprises, including your sewer fund, your water operations fund, and your airport fund, among others. Of course, the focus tonight, and for the most part in terms of the budget, generally falls on the general fund discussion. And one of the things that we're really happy to report is, based on an analysis of the fiscal year 1718 budget, we're anticipated to end the year with a fairly significant reserve balance to the tune of about a little over $500,000. And that is due to a number of reasons. One is there were some projects that we had planned within the fiscal year that we were unable to carry out, so there were some savings there from not fulfilling or undertaking those projects. There was also some unanticipated revenue increases associated with the economy performing well, increased property tax revenue, as well as increased sales tax revenue, which really has helped the city's bottom line. And that's really reflected in this year's budget. As you know, we reported to the council during the budget workshop that was held on May 15th and identified this really as a, you know-- and identified this really as a, you know, what staff calls as one-time monies. It's not something we anticipate is going to be ongoing. And as a result of that, we identified a number of very important projects for the City Council to consider. And as part of the workshop, the council did weigh in and provided staff direction to include some funding in the budget for some of those important projects. You know, some of those things, just to kind of outline, include contributing $5,000 to the Performing Arts Center to help fund a new roof for this building, which is, you know, a critical building in our downtown and helping an important nonprofit organization. Also, funding $10,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, which is an important service club in our community that helps the youth. So kind of two different organizations that the City Council voiced support for in terms of providing funding in this next fiscal year budget. In addition, council also looked at some real significant needs for the city, including funding some much-needed vehicle replacement. A number of our fleet vehicles are fairly old, aging, and inefficient that result in, you know, significant ongoing maintenance costs. Hopefully, by replacing them with more fuel-efficient vehicles, we'll reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, improve our mileage, and also reduce our long-term operation and maintenance costs until, you know, the time comes again to replace those vehicles. So that's one of the kind of important capital investments that you're making in this year's budget. Also, one of the critical items that the council agreed to fund was the preparation of a financial study, a financial forecast. And the goal really is to help the city understand its long-term revenue forecasts and expenditure forecasts so we can look at how we are going to fund and finance some other really important projects that we know are so sorely needed in our community, including a new police station, certainly a number of really important road maintenance improvement projects, you know, and a host of other capital improvement projects that we know we'll be bringing forward for the council's consideration. So with that said, I just want to kind of give you an overview of what brought us here today. That's really reflected in the budget is the direction of the council during the budget workshop on those additional expenditures. The good news is that even though you did spend some of that fund balance that is generated within our current fiscal year, we're still ending the year in a positive category with respect to our overall fund balance. And I think where we're expected to land with this budget is just a little bit below 30% with a budget reserve. One of the things I do want to point out is that we will be bringing back to council a discussion about how to allocate some of the unencumbered fund balance to some of your reserve funds, which you've identified is so important, again, to continue setting aside funds for the future to ensure that we have adequate funds for important future capital expenditures in case of emergencies, vehicle replacements, and so forth. So we'll be bringing that back. That's not identified specifically in this budget, but again, good news is we are landing in a good spot with respect to our fund balance. And I guess at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Susie, kind of give you a little more detail on the budget, you know, and some of the expansions and where we go from here.
Perfect. So yeah, just to add to what David has already said, I mean, he pretty much spelled it out and did a great job of explaining where we started and how we got to where we are in the budget. I just think it's important that we acknowledge that although there's deficit spending in this fiscal year for 1819, that 1718, there's such an excessive amount of funds that we had not budgeted, that we're projecting that we are going to have in our fund balance, that they offset. And still, between the two years, there's 285,000 approximately, actually, $310,000 increase over the two-year span. So I think that's an important thing to point out. Also, when we have the audit completed for 1718, then we will come back and determine where we should put some of that money into the reserves that are already predetermined by our reserve policies. So I think that's important to point out. Our water and wastewater are both coming in at levels that meet or exceed our policies. So we're doing fine financially there. Yeah, I think that pretty much sums up everything.
Yeah, one additional item to note is that Susie did include in the budget the reserve policy as an appendices to the document for your reference, and I hope that's a good guide as, and for the community to look at in terms of what I think identifies as a really good financial policy for the council and, you know, kind of sets the stage for us to bring a discussion back to council about how to allocate some of the unencumbered fund balances to those reserve accounts. So that's something that will be a next step in terms of kind of full implementation of the budget. But our recommendation tonight is if the budget meets with your approval, we're, we believe it's ready for your adoption. However, if council does have some proposed amendments, we think you can make those amendments tonight, and we could certainly make the adjustments with your direction to approve the budget if you decide to make some final adjustments in some of the spending. You do have some flexibility and room to stay within your reserve policy of 25% and make some additional funding decisions if you feel that that is prudent tonight. But otherwise, the budget, as you see before you, does reflect a lot of the budget decisions that you made at your budget workshop, and we believe it's ready for your adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a commented amendment. I don't find the community support page while I drift through here because I left my glasses home, so everything looks very much the same to me as I look at it, which can be dangerous when you're doing a budget, you know. Oh, and by the way, I couldn't find one typo or typing. No, it made me crazy at 2:00 in the morning, but I'm fine now. Actually, the amendment has to do with something that I think most of you are aware of, and that is the tremendous assistance we've been receiving as a city in the development of a Health Action Chapter. Health Action, I will remind you, is an initiative originally of the supervisors that took root in the Department of Human Services a number of years ago, and I've been involved in it literally since the beginning. There are, I believe, eight other chapters, so we want to join the rest of the jurisdictions. And I have to tell you, I've been going to the meetings, and I've been so grateful that our senior staff, the most senior, our city managers, have been attending those meetings too. Today's meeting was typical of one of the reasons why I'm going to ask you for $1,000 to offset some of the costs to the Senior Center. Rebecca Ennis, who is the new executive director of the Senior Center, has done an amazing job. You cannot have a chapter unless you have a strong coordinator/leader, and that person really can't be, it's not appropriate to be a council member. I don't have the knowledge that I need to work with the social service agencies and the health agencies and to try to coordinate something that often uses a vocabulary that I'm not familiar with. But Rebecca was a perfect candidate, and thanks to the efforts of a dear friend, the late Rich Coward, and wonderful members of the board of the Senior Center, during the process of her coming on board, I was able to discuss the possibility of her becoming that lead person. And she has just, she's just done a wonderful job. Plus, we have had a number of really wonderful meetings about interaction between, let's say, Wallace House and the Boys and Girls Club and Alexander Valley Healthcare and the school system, and that goes on and on and on, because what we're finding is common ground where we can work together. We were talking this morning, for example, about homelessness. I brought that up because it's been so much on everyone's mind lately, and also because I knew we were going to have a good presentation from the regional parks folks, and I wanted to make that part of our questioning. And it just took off from there. And by the end of the meeting, we had decided, aside from everything else, that one of the things we'd be doing is working with that and also a possibility of developing healthy food distribution, because we've been working with the county, and Rebecca stepped in. I got a contact from the county before I went away, and it was about developing an emergency food preparation and distribution. Sure enough, turns out Rebecca Beckenis knows Catherine Couch, who is the head of service, which I discussed here at the last meeting I attended. So long story short, I really hope that the council will approve a modest, very modest amount of $1,000 to offset the extra cost to the Senior Center of her time, because she's just taken on this on top of everything else, and she's doing a wonderful job for us. And I think there will be not only benefits to our community in the short term and the long run, but also benefits to the organizations who are getting involved as part of that chapter. It could also, I think, help them in terms of some of their grant applications. So there we are. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to go on a bit longer than I intended.
So we'll see if we have concurrence on that. Does anybody got any on the one item, and then we'll go around.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was under the impression that we did allocate some.
I thought we did too, but I didn't see it in here.
Some funds to the Senior Center. Did we not?
I didn't see it.
We did to the building, but not to, not to.
Not to programs.
Not to the program.
Okay.
Not to the specific program. We talked about it, but we didn't do it.
Support it, support it.
Yes.
Okay, so we're unanimous, so we'll add that to that, if you don't mind.
Mayor, councilmembers, it's just to identify the location where we would provide funding. I think it would be under Community Support, which would be Page 21 of 123 of the budget, or it's Page 164 of your agenda packet.
Okay.
Probably under Account 44130, where we identified the funding for the Performing Arts Center, as well as the Boys and Girls Club. We're getting $1,000 under the line item there. So the total expenditure for other would be increased from $15,000 to $16,000. And we can make that amendment. It will, it will change that page, and it will make a very small modification to the summary of fund balance, which is on Page 5, and it'll just reduce the estimated fund balance for 6302019 by $1,000. So you still end up with a $2.2 million budget reserve.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any?
Well, one thing I want to, I'm not going to ask for more money for the Performing Arts Center, but I am going to reiterate that I did, I really wish people would pay attention and see if we can find some granting money for solarizing the roof. That's our biggest bill in here. It's like between $700 and $1,000 a month. So if we can, I mean, we've gone through a lot of the normal channels, and we've applied for three or four grants, but grants are much harder to get now than they used to be. So if anybody comes across something for solarization for nonprofits, because everybody, everyone I'm calling is saying, no, we're just for homes, or we're just for this, or we're just for that. There's nothing that I've seen out there for nonprofits. But I don't know, there must be something out there.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we'll find it. Definitely. Okay, thank you.
Speaking of.
Do we still have that website where we could search?
No.
I wish you did, because I used to.
We've had it for years, and nobody used it.
Well, I did.
You did, but yeah, but nobody else used it.
I had it flagged, like about 16 different things flagged, and I would forward the grants into like the Boys and Girls Club or wherever, because they would come up on my email almost daily. E-Sivis.
Yeah. Well, it's actually from the, I think, the Volunteer Center or somebody had it originally, didn't they?
Yeah.
So anything else?
No, that's it.
There is a typo.
Oh, she found one.
On Page 142, I believe it is gas tax, not GACS tax.
Here is it, 132, I can't see it.
On, in the table of contents, so. But it's correct on the actual page, so.
Thank you.
Aces.
Anything else?
That was for Carol.
That was 132. I don't see it.
Gus, do you have something?
No.
Okay, I have one item before we open this up. Just on the front page where it's YMCA Solar Project, it's really Sonoma County swimming pool in Clover, the Cloverdale Pool, but it's actually Sonoma County, it's not the YMCA. We contract with them to do lifeguard and run the pool, but this is really not that project. And the placeholder is at 175, which we've agreed on, but the most recent correspondence was the placeholder for the 25%. They set it at 25,000, recognizing it would be less. Is that the most recent email the county sent us?
That is correct, Mayor. They did include in the agreement a placeholder of 25,000, though the staff member, Mr. Liu at the county, did identify that the project came in lower than estimated, so I think it was.
I'd like to move that to the 25, just in case, because that's what we put in there not to exceed, and it's our 25% of the match. The school district will also have to do the same, and the county's at 50%, which is 50,000. But just, we shouldn't have to spend that, but I think we just need to set it since that's the most recent correspondence, so I'd like to move that to the 25, if we could.
It's agreeable to me.
Okay, great. All right, we're all in agreement on that as well.
I do have one other thing.
Yes.
Since you brought up the homeless issue, I've been spending time down at Heelsburg High School, and they're doing a program of tiny homes, and there's now two of them in my driveway, if anyone would come and like to take a look. But they're building tiny homes, and they're fully wired. When you drive them out, they actually have a license plate and a registration on them. And they're very simple, very small, but they're going to be making like six more in the next two weeks, and then they're going to do more and more and more. So just for the hell of it, I got two of them. So if anybody's curious, come and take a look. But if ever we were going to look, because we've discussed this before, the tiny house issue, but they're very expensive. They can be $60,000 or $70,000. These are just simple rooms, but they're insulated, wired, lights are in, they even have a, well, you can call it a porch, sort of. But it's good to go as it is. It's even got the adapter to plug in. No bathrooms, and no kitchens or anything like that. But they're selling them for cost of goods, so they're going from anywhere between $5,500 to $6,500 each. You will never find a deal like that again. So they're, I think in the next three weeks, going to actually build or have classes for kids that are, well, not even kids, you can, adults can go for building. And they're actually having contractors on site that, the two I've got are little crude here and there, but they were built by high school kids. So I'm going to have to go over them again. But the program is fantastic. It's getting good support from, well, Tony Crabbe, a few other people.
Yeah, Tony Crabbe.
Yeah. And so if ever we wanted to do it, that group would be, I mean, for what normally one would cost, you could probably pick up 20.
Good. Okay, any other comments? I'm going to go ahead and open this up. Would anybody like to address the City Council on the city budget? And just so you're aware, I know we went through this really quick, but we spent almost six hours on it already, so the council's very versed. We went through this in detail at a special council meeting, so. Okay, see none, I'm going to close the public input, bring it back to City Council. We have a resolution. That should be introduced as amended with those changes. So who would like to introduce that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 034-2018, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving the Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19 as amended.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Walter, seconded by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussions on the motion? Okay, see none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Pollock?
Aye.
Okay, great. I want to just thank staff for all your hard work. I know your team put a lot of hours in this. Thank you, very appreciated. One quick question before we leave the budget. When do you think the funding to make the reserve decisions will be coming back on the timeline? the timeline?
Under the reserve policy, it's generally done at the time that the fiscal year audit is complete, but we did... Staff did note that upon completion of the previous year's fiscal audit, we did not bring back a conference, a discussion for the council's direction on the reserve balances at that time. So, I think we are anticipating we could come back to council as maybe as early as April... I mean, excuse me, as early as August and possibly sooner if... Once we get the budget all finalized, for a discussion on the reserve policy and a determination of what you'd like to see transferred to the reserve balances.
Great. Now, that answers it. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number seven. Consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution Number 035, 2018, declaring all weeds growing within the city to be a public nuisance and declaring the city's intention to remove and abate the same upon specified private properties under and in accordance with the provision of the City of Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, entitled Weed Abatement. City manager?
Yeah. Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers. The item before you tonight is part of our annual process for weed abatement. The Fire District routinely conducts code enforcement throughout the city to address weed growth that is considered a fire hazard and nuisance on property within the city. As a result of that effort, the Fire District notifies property owners and requests compliance with their request to abate weeds within a certain timeframe. If the property owners do not comply with the Fire District's request, the noncompliant properties are forwarded to the city for further action. In this case, a letter was received that's included in your packet by the Fire Chief dated June 5th. So, Monday last week, a letter was submitted by Chief Jenkins, which identified specifically three properties by address and accessory parcel number. The item tonight before you is to consider those properties to be a public nuisance and declaring the city's intent to remove and abate those. What it sets forth is that we provide those property owners notification that there will be a public hearing scheduled, that your next regularly scheduled meeting are June 26th, and it provides those property owners the opportunity to come in and otherwise describe if there are any reasons why they will prefer not to otherwise abate those weeds. But this is the process that's set forth in your municipal code. And what we ask you to do tonight is to adopt the resolution declaring those weeds identified on the Exhibit A in the resolution a nuisance, and we will follow up with those property owners by way of official notice, which has actually already been sent out. We did it as in concurrence with the hearing tonight, and give them the opportunity to come back to council at your public hearing. Hopefully, what we can report at that time is that all the weeds have been abated and addressed, but this is the process that allows for us to abate those weeds if a property owner remains not compliant with the municipal code.
Thank you. Any questions?
How do we add a property?
Just add... Put it out. We can add right now.
I don't know.
Well, it's going to go through the process.
Well, I mean, add it to the list to notify them of the potential violation. We've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, the list really does need to be included with the resolution, so that we follow the process and the ordinance. However, if there are properties that are identified that are considered a nuisance under our code, we can engage in normal code enforcement processes, and certainly, we can work to expedite those as soon as we can to ensure that those weeds are addressed if it's unsightly or a fire hazard, you know, prior...
I'm going to read more about fire.
Prior to the Fourth of July, which is kind of our goal, to get those addressed before the firework season. Because otherwise, this really... The resolution tonight really sets forth the process for, you know, formal weed abatement under the municipal code.
Okay.
Good. Vice Mayor?
I know this has become as a surprise, but I found a typo. Actually, it does concern me. Exhibit A on page, I think it's 271. The property address is listed as... The first one is 29 Railroad, but on page 272, it's listed as 129 Railroad Avenue. So, I don't know which is correct, but one of them is.
Missing a one.
Yep. There is. And there's one...
I read it all.
I'm glad somebody reads this, Carol. Thank you.
I read it all.
She does.
Hey, it's a document.
Also, at the end of the resolution, where it lists Exhibit A, it should say Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, not 18.
See, there you go. Where are we?
Those numbers should be 8.16, not 18.
Okay.
That's missing one.
There it is.
There we are. Yes! We're doing well tonight.
Neither created nor destroyed.
Correct that, too. I didn't know, assuming. Look, I...
Okay. Any other comments?
That's it.
Okay. So, before we open this up, I would like to ask the city engineer. I know we've talked a little bit about the Times Square property, which is also in need of mowing, and if you could just brief the community on when that's scheduled to be done again?
Yeah, so, that property was cleaned back at the end of April. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we got some rainfall, so it spurred some more growth, and it'll be addressed by the end of the week.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out there, so everybody's aware of that. Thank you. Okay, I would like to open this up to the community. Anybody would like to address the city council on this item? This would be the time to do so. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public input, bring it back to council. We have a resolution. Would somebody like to introduce it?
I'll introduce the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 035, 2018. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring all weeds growing within the city to be a public nuisance and declaring its intention to remove and abate the same upon specified private properties under and in accordance with the provisions of the City of Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, entitled Weed Abatement.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, it's introduced by Councilmember Brigham, second by Councilmember Walter. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Pollak?
Aye. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. We'll start with the airport, and we have Chair, Councilmember Bagby.
We met on... Let's see, I put it in my... Hold on, I put it in my report. Let me go back to my... Thank you very much. We met on June 5th, unfortunately, without Vice Mayor Russell, and we discussed the NorCal lease, which will be on the agenda on June 26th. We'll be able to review it and discuss it then. That's about it.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to finance, administration, and police. It would be Chair, Councilmember Brigham.
Next meeting is June 28th at 2:00 P.M.
Okay, great. Thank you. Planning and community development, it would be Chair, Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is June 26th.
Okay. And Public Works, it would be Chair, Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is July 24th at 10:30 A.M. at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you. And our joint city-fire district, and that would be myself, and our next meeting is to be determined, because the Fire Chief was going to be out of town. It was going to be this month, so we're going to get it scheduled hopefully for July. And I would like to make sure the fireworks is on that agenda as one item. Joint city-school district, that would also be mine. Our next meeting is tentatively July 16th. And I say tentatively because school is in recess, and I'm not sure they'll all be available, but that's where it's set. Okay? Council reports? Anybody have... We have reports in the agenda packet. Start, Councilmember Bagby. Anything additional?
I've submitted it in writing.
Okay. Councilmember Walter?
Thank you, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I didn't prepare a typed one. I just wanted to bring you up to date on a couple of things very quickly, one of which is about an effort that PG&E and other government agencies are involved with, having to do with electric vehicle charging stations and how we respond to emergencies. And at SETA, RCPA board this week, Cloverdale is included under the section on northern Sonoma County, but it's all really about Cloverdale in terms of where charging stations might be put. And I won't go into all the elaborate detail. You can find all the information, of course, online at Sonoma County Transit Authority, Regional Climate Protection Authority Board. But I did emphasize with staff, and they were very responsive to it, that it would be valuable for PG&E and any other organization getting involved in this, to check with the cities themselves, particularly because this is a long-range, permanent kind of plan to ensure that people who are responding to an emergency by leaving the city as well as coming into it, who are distributing things, emergency workers, have access to all the charging stations that they need. And they listed among ours, of course, our Citrus Fairgrounds, our Veterans Memorial Building. We know that in the Vets Building, for example, and Citrus Fair, there are currently two. At the Vets Memorial Building, I worked a few years ago to help get that. The Grange is listed, Jefferson Elementary, and they put down CVS Pharmacy in Ferber Plaza, though they didn't indicate Ferber Plaza because of the high traffic. And also, they're trying to focus on places where people are working. Well, there's... That's fine, except they are not aware of the fact that we're developing, helping people develop Times Square, for example, and we're going to have a wellness center there. Hello! Maybe we should think about that. So, I informed the staff, and also, as I say, suggested that as PG&E goes along, they really check to find out what the short-term and long-term plans are for cities. And also, because the southern part of our city, where our first exit off the highway is, is getting more and more and more activity and more and more work with people who'll be coming and going every day, including, of course, a special care center, you know, an assisted living center. And there are two who have some special people who might be available, and also, you can have a lot of people who have to know and be evacuated in terms of emergency. So, long story short, there's a lot going on, but I hope that PG&E and the Fonz will be following up on that as I get information about it. So, if any of you through any of the organizations that you're with, you're about it, please let me know before we discover that they put these things in the wrong places. And PG&E certainly means well, and so do the other government groups that they're working with. Again, it's just a response to the emergency. Oh, and good news, if you haven't read it, the second phase of the big pave, if you know, is underway, which means ultimately, yes, Geiser built to Cloverdale will be completed. And I'm very happy about that. And I'm also thrilled to tell you, I really am, that SMART has won a very coveted award. It's the Transit and Rail Project of the Year Award from the California Transit Foundation. I'm also very proud of the fact, I think we all should be, that Sonoma County Transit won for Emergency Response. They won the award.
Excuse me, up there, they're having a hard time hearing. Can we turn this mic up a little bit, please?
Well, the mic's right there. It's right there, and I'm scraping it. Want to give me another one? Okay, give me that one. That's a good one.
Yeah, that one's good.
Okay. Anyway, as I say, that's better. Now, it's working. When you don't hear well and you're wearing one of these, I can't tell whether the feedback comes from these, my hearing aids, or this, or somebody perhaps yelling from the audience. So, I kind of just keep going, but thank you for telling us. As I was saying, SMART won the Transit Rail Project of the Year Award from California Transit Foundation, and Sonoma County Transit won for Emergency Response Award. And Sonoma County Transit really deserved it. I mean, bus drivers are not supposed to be emergency workers, but boy, they were, weren't they? Fabulous people. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brigham?
I have one quick thing. I'm sorry. I don't know who made it to the piano recital here in this building. Did you come, Melanie? None of you?
I was out of town.
We were... There was a baby grand donated to the Performing Arts Center. It's a beautiful piano. And then, a doctor that lives in Heelsburg, part-time, and in New York, part-time, most of the time, but he's a surgeon of some type, but he's also a pianist, but he stuck his head in here one day, and he was so impressed with the theater and all the printed booklets and how professional it looked, that after the pianist finished his solo performance at Carnegie Hall, the doctor flew him out here to play.
Wow.
And it was a spectacular, sold-out show of some of the best piano that could be... I mean, it was world... It was fabulous. So, it was... Didn't cost the city of Cloverdale anything, and we now have a baby grand.
Fantastic. That's great news. Okay? And my report's in the packet, so I won't cover everything. I just want to just touch real quickly. On the June 6th, we had our first Cloverdale Town Hall meeting. We had about 60 people there. We were in a little bit of conflict with a lot of different schedules were going on at the same time with the Cloverdale Food Pantry having their main fundraiser Christmas in June. And I really, really encourage everybody, if you have not made a donation to the Food Pantry, please do that, consider that. Very important to our community. But unfortunately, there was that minor conflict. We also had the Cloverdale Little League Award Ceremony going on at the same time at Papa's Pizza, so that took a lot of people away. And then, of course, the big one was the Warriors game at 3:00. So, with that, the reason I bring that up is 60 was not a bad number, but it is available on YouTube. Go to Cloverdale YouTube, City of Cloverdale YouTube, and you can watch the entire or skim through it. But we had a good lineup, some good information from a lot of key people in our community, including Supervisor Gore. So, if you didn't get a chance to attend, please take the time to watch it. It's very good. That's my report.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just comment and give you a round of applause for putting that Town Hall meeting together. For the first one, I thought 60 was a good turnout, considering all the competition we had. You know, you did a lot of work on that, and I appreciate it as a council member. I'd also like to see us consider maybe adopting that on an annual basis, only having it in the beginning of the year, more towards March or the beginning of April, before all the activities start within our community. So, just food for thought on that.
At least before the final four.
And then, lastly, Mr. Mayor, while on the subject of microphone, I had the opportunity last week to be the alternate for Sonoma County Clean Power.
Sonoma Clean Power. Sonoma Clean Power.
Sonoma Clean Power.
Just Sonoma Clean Power.
I think that was the meaning I was at, but...
It was close enough.
I was so impressed with their microphones. They were Bluetooth, they sat like this. You pushed a button, it had a gooseneck on it. It was fine. So, I, you know, I don't know why we procrastinate with these old...
That was part of my strategy for being out of town, was to let Gus see the microphones, because, no, I don't think anyone believed me. They're really, really nice there. Yeah.
Good move, very good move. So, we did allot some monies in the budget to upgrade these, and I think that's something that has to happen sooner than later. These are not working out well at all, so.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to city manager report.
Mayor, one item I wanted to share with you. I received a request from the Senior Center to be able to enter into an agreement with the Red Cross to have Senior Center to temporary shelter location during emergency event.
Kate, could you use Kate's mic, please?
The mic's not working.
Just to repeat myself, I wanted to report that I received a request from the Cloverdale Senior Center to partner with the Red Cross to have the Senior Center be available, which, as you know, is a city-owned building for a shelter operation. And the agreement was sent to our city attorney for review. That review's been completed. They're generally fine with the agreement, and I think it's something that we would support and agree to, but I just wanted to report that out to the council, that that was an item that the staff was reviewing.
Great, thank you.
Question, Mr. Mayor, please? David, how is that going to impact the Citrus Fair? The Red Cross is supposedly using that facility, so are they going to give up one for the other?
There's no indication that they would give up the Citrus Fair as a shelter operation. It would just be an additional site that could be used, because it, you know, there's, could be needed particularly for seniors if there was, you know, a major incident where, you know, it has a lot of the equipment and facilities and kitchen that could support temporary lodging for seniors.
I'm just wondering, and I don't want to think too hard on this, it's such a wonderful thing that they want to do. My concerns are what's expected of the city. Are we expected to have staff there to help them be directed into the cooking? Do they come up with their own crew from wherever? Because that didn't happen at the Citrus Fair. There was one Red Cross representative there who did very little to help Bonnie get that shelter open. So, I'm just kind of concerned what's expected of the city on that end, too, so.
What I think I'd like to do, I'll forward the agreement to maybe Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, so that they have the opportunity to review it and provide feedback, and then we can get back to Red Cross with any comments that the committee may have, and then ultimately, necessary, bring it forth for council's consideration.
So, just a couple of quick comments. I really think that's an important feature to have as many available sites identified and equipped for an emergency. I really think it's important. We do, in our own code, have an act outlined with an emergency services committee or commission. I don't know the right words, but it's in our own municipal code. We don't really have that. There's a, one of the things in today's paper, the Board of Supervisors is struggling with the lack of training, the lack of services, the lack of everything, and every city's on that same plateau, and we really need to get this thing. So, I really think we should actually have this as a topic for an ad hoc, and assign an ad hoc that's going to focus on this, working with the other municipal agencies in the county as well as the county itself, because this is a big deal. It's a big deal, and it impacts everybody, and we're all in this together when it hits. So, I think having the shelters, the equip, who's going to do what, whose role is what, one of the big things was lack of communication, where the board couldn't find out what's going on. It was just, so we need to put this as a higher priority. We talked about this earlier around February, and I know we just need to move on that. So, maybe we should put this on the next agenda to form an ad hoc to talk about and review our emergency services operation plan and working, and then we can make an appointment to that and start that process, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, second that, because, and I'm not sure the microphone is working, but I second it because I see even with something as positive as electrical, you know, charging, electric charging stations, how decisions are going to be made for us if we don't make them, if we're not there to help make them, and that concerns me, because people mean well, but it doesn't necessarily mean it works out well. So, I think, I know you brought that up before, and I think it's a very good idea.
Okay. Anything else, city manager?
That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report? Okay, nothing. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. We just gave you one on the ad hoc.
That's one.
Any others? Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead and adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which is Tuesday, June 26th. Closed session is scheduled for 5:00 P.M. in the City Hall Conference Room with public session to start at 6:00 o'clock here at the Performing Arts Center. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.